All right, it's seven o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let's do your call. Mr. Hughes?
John Hughes here, Attorney. Brian sending Ward two.
Nikki White, Ward one.
Travis Scherz, Ward one. Brian McGreevy, Ward two.
Deborah McIsaac, Mayor. All presidents on board. So let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're gonna move into the approval of the minutes, we have May sixteenth, do we have any commentary or corrections?
I don't believe it is.
Does anybody else have any shirt, Mr. Scherz?
I got one for the next one.
Favouring it. Are we good?
Take a motion to approve the minutes of five sixteen.
I'll second that. We have Travis as the first, Nikki is the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion passes, let's go to five twenty-three, Mr. Scherz, if you have something you wanna say.
Yeah, under section C and D with the finance officer and the CRM said add your motions favorites. It should have been me and me and Brian for the finance officer for Lacey Branham, and then Ryan and Nikki for Lacey Arrington. For Ben? For Lacey Arrington for the CRM.
And who was that then?
That one was, they were just backwards, so the one of the finance officer was Ryan and Nikki, that should have been for the CRM one, section D. And then myself and Brian were for section C for the finance officer.
Can we make a motion for edited minutes?
Yeah, approve the amended.
You wanna go ahead and make that motion?
I will make that motion to approve the amended minutes.
I'll second that. Do we get Travis on the first, Nikki on the second, for the amended minutes, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we are going to claims payable, which is your pink sheet for those of us who are going through our little can handy packet of fun colors that we chose. And so, any questions on the claims? It's pretty straightforward stuff. Anybody has questions on the council payable, that's quarterly distribution, just so you understand what that is.
Make the motion to approve the council payables.
I'll second that. Okay, we got Ryan on the first, Nikki on the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right through it, now we're onto public time, is there anyone that would like to say anything about the time? Yes, him. I need your name and your address. I know.
You do?
Yep.
My name is Robert for one H P.
Thank you.
I have a question on the ballpark. One second. The River Park one or the Vardre Park?
The Riverwood Kirk?
Yeah, so like if you have They have a little ramp. And there's people on there, sit down there. Right, put their chairs on it. And see like I am for both, they give you money. Interesting. So they said there's not a sign up, there used to be a sign years ago that said please do not allow people to go there. I had friends in holders.
Is that the ramps that's way?
Yeah, I went to the ballpark.
Okay.
And they give, I don't know, I have almost some of the tall sheriff. And the last night he had some people with them and they made them.
Ryan, are we aware of a sign that we can replace there to say that it's a
Yeah, I don't remember if they're G F P, can you put it in?
Get one out and notify.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can reach out with the G F Ps to say.
So, I think that's appropriate. We'll get you a sign. Okay, we'll get you a sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you make sure that this young lady gets an update on when the sign's gonna arrive, so she knows what to expect there?
And even with conflict in general, you know, we don't really have a campground post per se.
Yeah.
I mean, we're we're all kinda around there, I guess, you know, I live right behind on the other side of the river, I've gone down there before, if there's, I've heard that there was conflict, when in doubt, if there's, yeah, any conflict, I just call the sheriff's office, and they usually have somebody down there anyway. The easiest way to do it.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz we pay the sheriff anyways. Yeah, to the twelve, so. They still aren't
Sharing is caring.
Are there, but when they just pass, then they, they just start off the side.
Okay. We'll try to help you with that, okay? Thank you for that, is there anyone else that has public time or anything that they wanna bring up? Yes, sir.
Amy's?
You're on the agenda, we'll get to you in a minute, okay? Anybody else? You're my first. We good? All right then. So then we're gonna move to old business, the Legion Memorial Plan, I got an update from Commander Mott. So let me just give you that, he can't be here tonight, so he sent me a text. And he said that he can't attend the meeting, but he wanted to update us all on the progress. He said our bid on the panels came in much less than he anticipated, which is great news, so they're looking to purchase a rock for the center and all six panels for phase one. So he had an artist that was supposed to have drawn a design so we could present to the council this evening, but it wasn't done. So hopefully he will have something for us next month to approve. And his goal is to have something in the ground by the end of summer.
Nice.
So that is the update, it's really good news, so, yeah.
Is the legal done on there?
No.
No?
No. You know, I I need this conversation.
Sure.
Okay. I can get you them.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll send it to you right now.
Oh, yeah, okay. You got it.
The beauty of technology, right?
Interesting.
Yep. Everybody's track of all.
What's this point on city, or on school?
Between the flagpoles, city.
Between flagpoles?
Yep.
It's one of those
Where that, yep. Going where that banner is. On the poles, right there.
We're gonna get a schematic so people can see it, for those people that, you know, need to see the picture. And so but that isn't available to make, so it's coming. So that was good news. John, that should be on your phone.
Perfect.
Okay? And then chickens. Oh, you want me to move it up, up? I'm sorry, I have been, I've been schooled to do something different. We're gonna move some, well, don't we have to, we have to do old business first, so we can move it to the top of new business. Through, yeah, it won't take this long, it'll be okay. It'll be okay, from okay? So chickens and city limits, Marcy, do you have something you wanna share?
I did the research on the three hundred ounce.
Yep.
You guys all have things, we've all seen a whole lot to say about it. Other than a number of chickens, the best thing in all the towns. You know, I was surprised we didn't have anything for the shelter, isn't it?
We mailed it to you.
Yeah, it's like, it's all six chickens, loud heads, six heads per town. They were all quite similar.
A special permit or something, and then pay extra for that, if you stop again.
Okay. I appreciate your due diligence on that, what I'd like to do is have two aldermen volunteer, one from each ward, to review all of Marcy's research, and then come back with an ordinance recommendation at the next meeting, so we can move forward on this. Who would like to be volunteering for the chickens and city limits?
I've been voluntold a lot, so I think McGreevy should be
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Nikki's gonna be there, she's gonna be our Ward one.
I'll do it.
Nikki? Nikki?
Chicken.
So are you heck yes or pluck no?
I assume I'm
Yes. John, John's gonna wear a chicken outfit to that meeting, so the three of you guys will get together. Marcy, you're welcome to attend, we can do it by a team's meeting if we have to. So that way we'll get us all together, and then we will come back with actually something to vote on, how does that sound? Perfect, ash trees. Is that you, Mr. Mott?
No, I was
Okay.
Reason why I wanted to bring this up is because there's a lot of ash in this town. We don't have any kind of program set up for this. And I was thinking about something is, you know, trees are expensive. And once they have, start getting cut down, is there any way the city can contact some kind of greenhouse or landscape company? And after so many people get so many orders in, we would add group discount?
Interesting. Mott, have you ever done anything like that before?
I was gonna say, in Del Rapids, what we had done, it's a one voucher, like a hundred dollars off the trees. Had to be a certain size, it mainly, what, three hundred dollars, two hundred, three dollars to create from a greenhouse. They give you a voucher for two trees for like a hundred dollars per tree.
Super
for replacing it, and that was, that was for if they were, if the city was removing Boulevard trees.
Yeah.
So it wasn't like if you could get it, anybody could get it, but it mainly was about that had ash trees that were
In all of our, right, soup balls and dog, for fifty dollars for all of it. For us, I think.
How many, how many properties, do we have any idea of how many are gonna be affected? Or how many trees we're gonna have to deal with?
So, and that's the question, are we removing them, or are the homeowners removing them, or are we going to allow them to treat some trees, or are we just going to, if they die, and
What, what would be the effort required to get an inventory of what we're dealing with? Because it's really hard to make that kind of a decision unless we know what we're dealing with.
Can we pass the receipts, the that, the whole of our trees?
Yeah, all of our trees aren't getting replaced. Yeah. Yeah, all of our trees aren't getting replaced.
Okay.
But if, you know, there are people that have trees in their backyard. You know, so do we want to help with that, do we not wanna help, how does that work?
Didn't Dell do it, or if it was on the Boulevard, they removed it, but if it was on your property, you were the owner, it was homeowners.
Okay, so is that something that the city, the city council is comfortable with, with that kind of a policy, or do we want to find out what kind of numbers we're talking?
We find out what's in numbers, because we don't have a manpower.
You don't want to go around removing trees.
So what, how much time would it take to, or what would be involved with taking an inventory of what we're doing?
Be our best guess of that right now, realistically, we're probably what's in our Boulevard, to pay a lot of part of the town.
Sure.
Because we have a lot of dealers on the So I mean realistically, I bet you there can be trees replaced that are fast, that are
So is that something that we have to cut down this year then, if that's the case?
No, it's all what kind of manning do we want to do, if you feel the need, and that's with like soup balls, Del Rapids. Del Rapids will each year, we were taking a hundred trees. But then, you start looking at the thought, removing a hundred trees, and grinding them, it was inside almost a hundred dollars a year, just to
Yeah.
And the city had five personnel that were, in all the, we just dropped the trees, and it was the city removing all the trees. But it is, we actually, they allow it to say, if you wanted to treat a tree, yeah, that have an arsler to come and treat it, pay the three hundred dollars to treat it, and then it stamped a tree saying, so that tree would not be moved. But at that point, it's where you if you feel that there is a threat and it's going to stop it, but if, you know, if you're hitting out fifty trees, there's still more and more trees that are, which could be, could be affected.
Okay.
So.
So the first step is to take an inventory of what we estimate might be affected. Then can you, in that inventory, can you note the address and the number of trees, and the location of the trees, whether or not they're in the Boulevard or in the yard?
I would always be wanting to say, or I think that I've been looking for, because I think that's for
I think just the right ways.
Okay.
I understand what I think the city
Yeah. Is it, if it gets anywhere else?
That's That's fine. And so if you can give us an inventory of the addresses and the ones in the Boulevard, then let's get that to the aldermen, so they can follow up with their constituents. And then give them their options, and then we'll figure out what we're gonna do from there. Does that sound like an okay plan for you guys? So we can divide and conquer?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, it might be Nikki and Travis doing the lion's share of this, that's why Ryan's saying is so agreeable to it, cuz he's
Yes.
Okay, how much time do you need to do that, can you do it in like my next two weeks? Okay, then that gives them time to take a look at it, and then get back to us in the meeting. Perfect, okay? So, um All right. Resolution twenty-three oh one, there was a fines and fees, Lynda, do you wanna speak to this a little bit?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm working with our wonderful attorney on this. He's I had a call from one of the sheriffs, and he was like, what are your fines for curfew, and what are your fines for fireworks, and, you know, you should do this, because that's what other cities are doing. And so I ran that by John, and he is going to because of course we don't do anything legal, you know, without our attorneys. And, you know, I was worried about the whole court thing, and if, if these cases would go to court, if that was even something we would do. So John is going to go these over, and have a report at the next meeting, do you think?
Certainly.
And I did go over this, and, you know, there were some things that I thought were strange, like credit card user fee. Well, that's a fee set by third party vendor, so anything in red is what I wrote. And then Ryan helped me, Ryan Fodds, and we went through things. Mosquito spraying, it said one twenty-five per month. We were at one dollar. You know, small things like that. We talked about water disconnect, fifty dollars instead of forty. Grass mowing. We had one twenty-five per hour, man, with one hour minimum, and we thought I thought, well, if it's a job we contract, we better have or contracted price from independent agent, cuz there might be cases that are so volatile, that you want an independent contractor doing it.
Yep.
And then I read the trees and vegetation section, and that was really confusing for me. So John will have to look at that, but I just thought like abatement or correction fee. So just some things, another thing I thought was really strange, is when the Humane Society impounds an animal, they only get ten percent of that, and I thought they should have a one hundred percent of an impound fee, because they're bearing the brunt of that. So that was another success that I have. And then there was camping, and I had talked to the lady from the Humane Society. She said, how can you only get ten percent, and, well, that was what's in the contract, so. But I just thought, they, you know, since it's a service, maybe we should give them all of the authority when they impound, it doesn't happen a lot. And then, I'm camping, I just put all camping reservations will be made online through a third party vendor. Camping reservations take up so much time, and we still get calls, and we're trying to push. You know, we don't do that anymore, you know, you have to go through this rover path.
But then we still have people going and physically marking the spots though, right? And they were
There's still, we, we had a case like that, we left them know, he called, and I got it straightened out with them, that he has to go through rover path.
So are we quality checking that people are actually doing with their
Yeah, the guys ride and go through there. And we had a strange hard mark there the other day, and called the sheriff on that.
Okay.
So it's just kind of nuisances, things like that, and John's gonna look all of that over for us. And we had some ideas, curfew violation, I hadn't seen one, fine, but I guess John said it's it's in another section.
Five hundred bucks, thirty days.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So was it keep the kid for
So is there a deadline for us to approve today, or do we approve for next month?
Well, it's gonna have John go through and give us a report
For next month? Okay.
Cuz there's all these legalities and the ordinance book.
That we have to cross check, yeah.
One, one section's here, one section's there, and
And then if there's anything that we have to change regarding ordinances, John, that's probably something we need to discuss.
This is just a resolution.
I think where we're gonna head, is the ordinance change, this spitballing, I assume ordinance change that allows the council to set fines, fees, and penalties annually, semi-annually, whatever, whatever you wanna change it.
Okay.
And that way we can have a clearance.
I like it.
Get away from the kind of the handcuffs of the ordinance.
Yep, I like that, I like that a lot, John, okay.
There are some ordinance, some dollar amounts in the ordinance book that shouldn't be there. Yeah, because it'll all be through resiliences, can point the fees. So you can change them as well.
Yep, I got it, I got it, so that was informational, thank you, anything else? All right, then.
This purple task. Yeah, so I'll take it from you.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure we blew those circuits.
Okay, so now we're onto new business. Your arm.
Give me a second. My engine's getting close. From Europe. Excellent. What I, I would love to do, what we are doing right now, we have a group of students in the soup halls. And this is my second summer doing this. Like about educational resources, for the panelists. Books in the online system that helps in the little, big, tiny ones. The ones, all the way to college students. Leadership program, books, educational, prep for university, S and Es, A Cs. Basically, what we are doing, we are selling the systems to help kids with school, save time for school, be able to more easily, and more durable, more money. This is what we are doing. Yeah, I would love to apply for the permit, as well for the graphics, to give graphics, I can, don't care as well. With I would be really happy. Are you in other cities now? Right now I work in Brandon City, in my soup halls.
Yep.
What other cities are you applying for?
Last year I worked in Estelane, Mobridge, Soup Halls, Walde City, Aurora, and a couple more. This year, Brandon is first city, it's my first week right now in North America. But I will be, till end of the summer, so it will be more capital cities. Right now I don't know which cities it will be. The manager for a bigger experience, if he will manage all our team, it would be better, so we will talk to somebody.
Other questions?
They're here pretty much every year.
Travis, do you have experience with, with this company?
I don't have experience.
I have.
I'm never
We bought books from them before.
Okay. For you?
Yes.
I'd say sure.
There you go.
You've probably heard about this.
Yeah.
Somebody ought to be here.
So what he's applying for is a peddler's license to have permission to go door to door and ask people if they would like this running, so I defer to the council, what would you like to do?
Take motion to approve peddler's permit, if you know other discussions?
Second.
But Travis is doing the first. And Ryan got the second on that, and he raised. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I need information from you, so we can let the citizens all know that you have permission. Okay, so Lynda can, or Lacey, can we get information from him, so we can kind of announce that they've been approved, and this is okay? So there isn't any confusion on that, okay, it's important.
Actually, when I started working in new cities, I always make pictures with police department chefs, chiefs city hall ladies.
Oh, you guys are gonna be on Facebook, that's great. I love that. That's perfect, that's perfect.
Still saying it, because I have a little bit accent. And you don't get many calls, who is this guy going on?
Yeah, well, make sure you put Ryan Fodds in that picture. That's perfect, thank you, and welcome to voting, okay? All right. So next we have the street closure, yes?
Have this
Yep, that's for them.
Also, I got this email from this purity bond. They send to the finance union. Email.
They did?
They, they send
They send it to us?
Yes.
Okay, you'll have to call us tomorrow, cuz we need to check, we need the money.
Oh, I can do it right away.
Okay, and then we need the insurance.
Yes.
Okay.
We can do it right away.
Yeah, you can, can you? Yeah, okay.
Nikki's gonna go and do that right away.
I'll do that right away.
So the next thing that we're gonna move on to, I'm gonna skip over bank resolution permit, and we're gonna go to street closure. This was So we have the letter here from Greg Bartling. And I'm interested, are they here? No, more Okay, sorry, my best. Sorry, okay, I'm interested in getting, you looked familiar from last year, that's why I was, I was in class, so I was like, oh, okay. I'm interested in getting a permit to temporarily close down Anna Avenue on Tuesday, July fourth, for the Fourth of July festivities. Requesting closure from four PM to eleven PM with cleanup to follow, requesting to be closed from the intersection of Sixth and Anna Avenue, going west of five twenty-five Anna Avenue. All parties and welder in agreement with the closure, this would also serve as a safety net, as all parties will have numerous families and friends attending the festivities. If you need further information, please feel free to call me, if you guys recall, Greg Bartling did this last year as a law, and we approved.
This is not for fireworks, this is just for street closure this year.
Right. It's on the fourth, yeah, they've done this for like fifteen years now, I think, is what they said.
So I just need a motion.
I think a motion to pass it.
Okay, so
Street closure.
McGreevy's got the first.
I'll second.
Nikki's got the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Streets closed, fireworks permit, yay! We just need your name and your address, everybody knows who you are.
Angela Lyndson, right, Lyndson, five eighteen, Anna Avenue. July first, year.
Cuz that's Saturday, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Every year.
Any questions, council?
Take a motion to approve fireworks permit.
We go. Travis has got the first, McGreevy's got the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, yay! You talk to Lacey, and sometime before we close for the holiday.
Okay, before then.
Yeah.
I'll just do it right now.
Go get it while you can. Yeah, just anytime before the fourth would be great, thank you, okay? That's funny. I love that. Okay, so now with the really fun bank resolution, so there was some things that we needed to straighten out with our bank, because they need everything done by bank resolution, where's that at now?
Back.
What color is it?
It's a single white picture.
Oh.
Last name. There's
I don't want to, I wanna be a problem.
Stabbing league.
Get it, okay? So what we have to do is, what they're asking us to do is to clarify who gets what power with the bank account, because they wanna have it still there, it needs to be in the minutes. Because they want to have it still there. It needs to be in the minutes, and it needs to be defined. I think you all recall, we did this once before when we first started back in May, when we had the turnover last year. And so we just need to do it again, because we have new faces, we have retirements and things like that, so we're getting it all straightened out. So as you can see, for opening any deposit or share accounts in the name of the corporation, which is the city of Baltic, that would be the finance officer and the council president. And, and we're gonna alternate this stuff, because you don't want everybody having everything. So then, which I go to the next one, which is everybody having everything. So endorsing checks and orders for payment of money, otherwise withdraw or transfer funds, it can be the finance officer, the mayor, or the council president. Okay? Then the next one is bar on behalf of the name of the corporation, executed delivered promissory notes. That would be the finance officer and the council president. And then endorse, sign, transfer, mortgage pledge bills, a whole list of stuff. That is finance officer, council president, and then again. Enter into a written lease for the purposes of renting, maintaining and stuff, and that would be all three of us, the finance officer, mayor, and council president. This is basically checks and balances for our city. So nobody can just run around and go crazy and do things with the city assets. So that's related, this is above. It's a limitation of powers. And so then what we did is, I think we also corrected the spelling of my name. It's also something that needed to be corrected. And do we have a document for that, or do we just note? Okay, so then we're gonna wait on that. Is that a separate document? Or can I just put in the minutes that the spelling of my name is D E B O R A H instead of the D E B R A? There, now it's official. Okay? And so we'll make sure that's duly noted in the minutes, so that way we'll see if that's enough for her. And so then we have the resolutions, those are standard. And so I just need. Any discussion on the description of power and whether or not you approve or want to move forward with this.
Is this any different than any other year prior?
No.
I think it's, from what I remember, I think it's been a couple of years since we've done it, but I'm pretty sure that's.
I think we did it when we started, because we had to clarify all of that stuff. And she needed it in the minutes and resolved.
Yeah, we're redoing what was done a year ago. Yeah, that's, Linda's need.
Yeah, because anytime you have anybody new that has access to.
Now, there is a possibility that we'll be getting a document that is, that she may dictate a specific form, but we think this is all we need at this time. And. So yeah, that's, that's what this is. So I just need a motion to approve this, and if we need more, we'll do it next time.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the banking.
For most.
Banking information that's updated.
So Nikki's the first?
Second.
Ryan was the second. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Excellent. Motion passed. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so now. We are on to the engineering update. There he is. Thank you, Lynton.
Thank you.
You're coming up here, because we talked really quiet and the air conditioning is going to stop. Yeah, it's better. Thank you.
I'll list them all the projects. You've been on some water main building project that's under P M. on review right now, so typically they give a thirty day review. Like that was submitted two weeks ago. So do try to check up on that. We're gonna make minor changes on that. But still expecting to get that project out in this year. We'll have a completion date next year, and then we'll go through a whole lot of stuff, so. On full version, I don't have the question. So contractors, availability exists. We'll get it done this year. The lives will be done twenty twenty-four. I'll tell you some contractors, maybe planning out, it's okay, no rain, which is a lot of time, so.
Okay.
Open ash improvements noted there, but six person plans right now, they're under internal review. Once we get this internal review cleaned up, gonna get it right instead. Review for sixty percent if it progresses, then. So. Mainlist station, same thing still in design. That one is this bit, I have that designed this. This summer yet, slash early fall, to get that off bid with the same premise, if there's contract availability. Those three projects are the S R F, are the lumped in projects, just to note all that, so all funding secured. Just making sure we're prospering, that arrives with that. First master plan, sidewalk master plan, just want to note those two, those are really been calling for the C I P, have the improvement that we're doing. So how to get this project done in the next five years. Now we'll be seeing more on that. And then lastly, note there's a definitely improvement planning. That we're really starting to look into. Renewing all city infrastructure, which have pretty good knowledge of what we have right now. We're gonna beat that, you know, project priority list. Present that council really looking at this state, your supposed projects. But we feel we need to get that in the city. Here's finding, I can get this done, putting some priorities.
And we do have room from our citizens, so if they're interested in feedback on that, they want to participate on that committee, this is an open invitation for that. And then have them reach out to me directly, and then we'll discuss it.
So. Could be, you know, all recommendations, maybe, is I'm also, I'll be checks and balances throughout that, just to make sure we don't get required of ourselves.
Sure.
Also within your package, there's a design contract for the Baltic Heights. Against two basketball courts in there, mixing courts, as well as the disco courts, putting in revise that with the disco courts. There will be support parts to put together on that, providing some of that ranking. Intention with that one is to get the design guys in the S A P. Try to get some of those built yet this year.
I told him we wanted it done by God Day and say, look out for this chair.
Well, I can promise that. That can be based off of that initial concept plan that we had, so we start out with design on that.
I know it's too late for this one, but over the last couple of weeks, that basis since baseball started, lights.
The lights.
The lights for the big dining, you know, I know they're expensive.
On the big dining.
You know, and. A couple of people at school have been talking that, you know, the football lights are too low. I guess this supposedly the worst football field in the subdivision, whatever. So. Is there any way any of us could talk to the school about when they were going to replace those lights, if we can have the poles for the softball? I don't know if the lights would be able to be transferred. But I mean, the poles.
How far are the poles? Because we know David and us possibly be the ones on every part are seventy foot, the big ones are seventy foot out of the ground. So with. You can turn your lights up, but the reason why. It was all, this was years ago, they did a light evolution study.
Yeah.
You will hire, so you can affect.
Well, yeah.
The strong, because when you have to get, you turn the lights up, so you get elevation of them, well, then that's when you start affecting all the neighbors.
Yeah.
That's my part, we get to the whole, and I'm not sure if they have a football field, if they, they probably have issues. We might have issues too with the same pole, just because now we're broadcasting it, not all the.
Well, and also Jay Val Miller was doing some research with a contact that he had to get votes on lights for the softball fields too, and so he hasn't fully got that vetted yet, but he's looking to get information on that. So we should have, I mean, most of the people are working on it, so. Yeah. Okay. So we need to decide if we want him to move forward with this scope of work.
Yep.
And that basically allows us to get going on the Baltic Heights Park.
Yep. Phase one.
Phase one.
That's something that should wait until capital improvement plan is done? Because we're talking, so your total, fifty-five thousand in engineering fees plus approximately eighty thousand in concrete, dirtwork, et cetera, et cetera.
You're talking. You know, I think that I'll still ask. Just, and I'll put our total horizontal budget into, you know, if we feel like we got like. For this year, get this project placed, get some of those. You know, quality of like projects in place. This is probably most of our most projects where. That's been a number right now, but to your point of why, why we're thinking about that, on my first side, I did, I'm pretty much done this, who's making sure.
From an interest standpoint, though, there's been a lot of citizens that have expressed that this is a priority for them. And so there's definitely consensus of interest of use and, and wanting things in the park for kids to do. And I mean, it's unfortunate that, you know, we can't have it. Executed, you know, for the bulk of the summer, but at least getting it in place. And also remember that the basketball courts would serve as a base for the ice rink.
Right.
So that's convertible for winter.
That was important. We need to circumcise the ice rink, right?
Is that right?
Like a goal along, like, correct?
A lot of those, P VAC council and public, that's the best of all the works, and that's.
Right.
Right.
The original plan, so there is gonna be some, you know, scale up through most of them at the same time, or just move on out.
Give a breakdown on the cost of the courts versus like the concrete loops or X.
I haven't done it. He died, he helped us, let's be honest.
And then do you bid that out, or how does that work?
Yeah, we would bid it. But through the design process that. But you know, that we tell break on costs doesn't mean any work inherently here, as well as the contract.
And that's where we probably need to get a group of people together to make sure that we have it all nailed down, or is that we just go forward with the bid process here?
We was going through with it.
Okay. But as far as the boundary survey and all of the land survey and everything like that, is there any other interaction that you need from the council and or citizens to do? This scope or?
I mean, we'll provide. That's, that's the biggest thing.
Okay. Because I do think that the citizens that are bought up to Baltic Heights should at least have, have a.
Yep.
A voice in that.
Absolutely, and I have a strange, that is about worse. So I was on talking about relating what they like to do, you know, or something specific like that, is to actually come out, walk the site. And this and whatnot, and play them out, but just making sure, even all that stuff, you know, you're making sure we're gonna just.
Yeah, I just don't want us to make these decisions in a silo and make sure we're including all the people that want to use the facility, so people feel heard. So, yeah. But the first step is the designs. We really can't do anything until we've done this.
Right.
So. It's, it's not like we just go, hey, this is a basketball court, and you just slap it on the ground. We literally have to go through this process.
Yes.
Okay. So. I guess the question is to the councils, do you want to get the ball rolling, or do you want to kick the can?
Is the amount within the budget for the year? I mean, is that something that's?
We have funds in our capital budget to be able to cover this.
One thing to note too, that survey is for the whole property too, so it's a big, I don't think right now, how we all make your improvements.
Gotcha. It probably won't get any cheaper, so I don't. Over that.
Sure, we need something that's comfortable to do.
Absolutely.
Ridiculous. Which is why we have a baseball case to do to go, you know, on something. That's why we've been pushing this. I think it's awesome. Any other feedback? Any other questions?
Well, another thought, that some, some other constituents that was on a small ball field, the fence is too far out. You don't need the fence that far out. Why couldn't we move the fence in and put two T-ball fields at that corner, because T-ball has to play at school.
Well, and all those conversations can happen, but this has to happen first, straight?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Put in motion.
Okay, because until they've done, go ahead, John.
Motion to approve it during the years.
Make motion to approve. The air can be smelling.
I will second.
Okay, so I have Ryan. On the first, Ryan on the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I just, do you have another topic, or do you want to, we'll start maybe? You need me to do it, you need me to do it right now?
No. Whatever in this app.
Of course, okay, so we'll get that done. Okay, C I, C I P plan we've already talked about.
Is there any other questions, just to get our engineering proposal?
Would you miss it?
No.
I may so. Thank you.
So, will you have, like, a breakdown, when you're done with this part, will you have a breakdown on cost for those, for the courts?
Absolutely. You know, one of the things that's why we do that, do, you know, we'll probably see as. One of those things that's nasty, it's changing, right? So if we start breaking everything down, and it's been bid back, maybe it's a little higher than expected. We can start value engineering that, you know, for which contractor, well, maybe that fence does make things get slower right now. I know.
Right.
That's all, for example, right?
Right.
That's a big part of it, we'll start looking at those pieces and see what. What are the needs right now, you know, at that point?
Could we have concrete loops up this fall? For the fall?
Well, it's, it's what we're gonna shoot for, you know.
No pun intended.
To some of the contract availability, that's why I was starting to say, you know. We need to find that balance to where we don't want to force a contractor into a short time line. You know, although we also try to capitalize on it, very spendable ability, get this worked on, so that's where we'll have. Have everything set up, SNF explosive, start up construction pipelines, establish locations to hold that obviously.
So we probably need to vet this with the residences that are bought up to that property. And then how many, do you guys feel comfortable reaching out to your constituency to get a couple of people to review this, so that way we can say we have consensus across the city?
I know a few people that borrow the. Uh, thanks, Mark, too, so I can chat with them.
One comment I heard that they were concerned is with that grass, the initial drawing, you know, you have like a.
Grass area.
That roads were concerned.
Roads.
Roads going, yeah.
But we can address that in the meeting, and so if we have a meeting that has the adjacent landowners there, and then we have other. Citizens, I mean, because it's not just the people that are around the park, you know, to Debbie's point, everybody needs. This facility, so I'd like you guys to get in your head of like maybe three to five people that might want to give feedback on, feedback on this, so we have a really well-rounded group of people. So if you guys could.
I'm pretty busy with chickens, Ryan, right?
I'd like each of you, I'd like each of you to find like three to five people that at least can provide feedback, even if it's online. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, and so three to five constituents, and then adjacents. Travis doesn't get to double dip and use the adjacent constituents, you've got to find other constituents outside of the adjacent ones. And then, okay, so we got everything covered for you? Is there anything else we need from our valiant engineer? Is the excuse for the evening, or do we need to hold on to?
Thank Ryan, sure. Interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Fodds, you're on.
Hey. First one I have on my list is their visitor concern citizen, regards to an alley. And I'm just kind of looking for suggestions on how we can do it. They're downhill. In the drain. So.
This one's been a problem for a while.
Yeah.
They all are, all the others.
I mean.
Well, especially down, I think I know the one.
And. So this former is now very concerned, and said I got a term, you know, I. I don't know how to mitigate it, because if I mitigate it on the third round, then I'm going to plot the shoes on the other side. I live out of the game day, I mean, I can bring it and travel. But I mean, from the difference from. The west side of the garages, above alley level, the east side, the alley is actually like four piper. So I mean, and it's, it's all slow, I mean, the hill is slow, everything runs that way. So I don't, I mean, first, the stuff that's best is the big battle, but then now I would be, if I had to do gaming blocks or something to at least build it up. But then there's gonna be a two-foot gap between the garage, so then to me, that becomes an issue with the snow review or night in my summer, where people drive through the alley, they get. Off-centered and slip, and then if you, like, slide into the garage, I'm just looking at what should we do for mitigation.
Is this something that P and C could be helpful with to make suggestions, or do you feel that would bog it down, because it would answer sooner rather than later?
Just where if. Need assistance, I. They, what did they recommend, but I mean, cheapest way is to try to do gaming blocks, but then. I build it up, but then I am not gonna be two feet on one side, and then it'll be down with paper, just so that's the water.
No, you don't want to do that, because we're running into issues with alleys in time. There's one hill alley in particular that this coming Thursday, we're having a meeting with. Upper city officials, engineers, myself, my supervisor, and the resident that has been complaining. Because she lives in the dip, there's three dips in this alley. It's all supposed to drink to the north, because there's concrete on the south end, okay? And nothing's been done with this alley except material, but and there's a guy's fence on the east side of this alley. That has been this much gravel and buildings against his fence. Well, his fence was there before. That has been this much gravel and buildings against this fence, well, this fence was there before. Before all this was said, okay, you wouldn't put your fence three feet north of the alley, so. Uh she's complaining because of the water drainage, so how can you? Make it acceptable to take her water and put it in somebody else's yard.
Exactly, so I'd like to make a suggestion if you don't mind. Ryan, are you comfortable having a meeting with Justin, you, maybe Mr. Sending and Ed if you want to attend, John, I'd want you to be aware of what they're doing so you can have the legal. Um aspects of it, and then I think that all of the landowners on that alley need to be aware of what's going on because it can't be just to. Sir, one, I think everybody along the alley needs to be aware.
And I express that to that.
And and that's fine, but we're concerned.
Honestly, like the true way is, I mean, it is naturally crosses, water crosses our right away, but it's just a natural hole. The only way I feel too that would be the way to mitigate it, it do have to create a valley in the down grade. And have it all put on, but then that's a maintenance. Because then. I mean, this this alley is even harsher when we have all that snow, I went through the one time with the payloader and I bought it in everybody's garage.
Right.
Snowboard, and so that's actually sad technology, it it's a bad alley.
What streets is between?
Uh more filter.
So are you guys comfortable, do you guys have any amendments to that kind of a suggestion to have a conversation with everybody involved and then come to a recommendation?
So I think those.
I mean, the best is to look at it, it's just, you know, the only other things would be to try to maintain a level alley. In water, but then it would be cut, what I can say is you have to cut into the. North side and put a retain all there to maintain that first. And then it could just be a drop off that that's gonna.
So see it water in in the garage or what is the maintenance here?
Yeah, it it I mean, with heavy rain and all snow, but that was not just that first, you know, I mean, everybody had that issue.
But the truth of the matter is, is we can't make a decision on this tonight at all because people have gotta go look at.
Honestly, that's why I shot up this so to get some gut, because it's. I can't fix it without causing another issue.
Right, so are you guys cool with Fod's, Justin, Sending, um John Hughes, and then Ed, meeting with landowners incoming up with some suggestions?
It's worth having a conversation with everybody involved, I'll try and look at it just so I can understand it.
Travis, we're gonna volunteer to be involved in that too then, okay? Perfect, okay, is that what you needed, Ryan?
What's that?
Is that what you needed? Okay, let's tell us about street repair.
Okay, I got a. Numbers out of four different uh. Papers.
Um for Bonnie? For what?
For everything, for all.
Okay.
One question I have. Is bid law up to a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, I've got four people, you know, I can get four posts, but I have a hundred fifty thousand, I was thinking. It's just a rough number from contractors and just to do uh. Lovely, the we thirty five forty thousand dollars for that last stretch, just but I mean, right there, I would see my budget was thirty thousand, but we have money available. But I wanna know for bid law, did it, did it for you or did it go up to a hundred? And then Justin, we did read it, it says a hundred, but it's it's. Illegal, it's cheese, it was so hard to like what's the reading, so that's it, I just kinda wanted to give it up, I'm yeah, waiting on numbers from a different contractor.
So then you'll bring that next month to us so then we can.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they should all get here itself.
Okay, do we need to, do we need to, do we have the bandwidth to wait till July or do we need to give you some leeway?
No, we have.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, I mean, it can be, I hope, I mean.
Then let's talk about dust control then.
Yes, so I think everybody had another fact that was just uh what uh B X is for the building material thing or the dust control. This is on just fifth street. And then I added up, you know, guesstimation, uh four belly jumps are really not a full ass, that's a three. Down let downhill, so four should be enough, but it might not be, so that makes it a little bit harder. But that we've had a necessity and I know especially once still felt was pulling that dirt out, it was really dusty.
Sure.
I mean, it's dry and it's one of those things that it would be. You know, approximately five thousand dollars and some all done with uh. Spear of pump will have the drains and ground down some way to get it ready for like four eyes. Let's just, I just got numbers, so. Up to the council.
What do you wanna do?
Probably with as much activity as can be on that road in the foreseeable future with this application last fall summer. I mean, within.
Supposed to and and this is where other helps a little bit of rain every so often keeps it alive. Because a lot of the times they can make it through winter too, I I know revise open on those options, but it will ultimately maintain. Um as long as every condition is perfect, if it gets beat up right away. Dries out, water will upset, keep it to the line.
If if it dries out, can you go spray water on the street or is it not the same?
You can put some on there, but if you put too much on there, then it dilutes.
Yeah, it'd be like a nice misty rain kind of like the both would be perfect for it, but not a lot to get separated.
New gravel helps out.
And that's, yeah, that was just a, you know, a little that figured and that's approximately about. Just under. A hundred and twenty one, so I mean, that's.
So um in light of the other thing, in the the dominoes that are Baltic and the different things that we need to handle. Um fifth street is behind a couple of dominoes. And so it may be worth our time to figure out a solution for this summer for those citizens that are affected by that dust. Um because we're not sure when we can actually go into a paving project. So I think it's in my recommendation, this is this is absolutely worth considering, but it's up to you guys what you wanna do.
I think it's a fairly small expense expense for uh considerable gain in the big picture with as much activity that's going on over there. I'd make a motion to approve. Probably the amount not to exceed a certain amount probably, is that how a guy should?
Well, the points are the hard part is gonna be.
Right, but yeah, if you have a variance in gravel, I mean, I would make a motion to approve um dust control and gravel not to exceed five thousand. That gives you a little bit of a leeway.
Well, well, that gives me the hope to be if I have to get another pull, that's gonna be that up four hundreds of dollars per pull of gravel.
So like seven.
Yeah, we're fifty fifty nine forty. So.
So what do you, what's the most you think of?
I was hoping to buy it out, I was hoping for the one, but I mean, it had like fifty five, not to, I mean, it would tie or even not six eight six. That would be actually another two bullies of gravel probably.
Okay, so what number do you need?
Seventeen forty plus this.
What number, what number do you need?
Or that's what that's saying, just sort of six billion gravel plus.
There you go, Travis, up to six.
Twenty seven, seventy one, five or four at application. Or if you wanna do, I think six thousand.
Make a motion to approve um expense not to exceed six thousand for um gravel and dust control for fifth street.
Would you give Ryan the right to sign the contract?
And give Ryan to accept the contract or sign on, sign the contract.
Okay, we got a first, I'll second, so Travis is on the first, Nikki's on the second. Um. Would you two wanna call your constituents that are on the backside up to fifth street and let them know that we just passed this, so it's coming? Do you guys wanted, do you guys wanted to buy and conquer who that all is? Give Nikki the opportunity to deliver some of the news too, so you guys, that's not enough. Okay. Finance officer update. Sorry.
For the food cleaning, so we're um in our primary cell. The station there just dumps right into the cell before we get all the solid and there you all put up there, there is. Probably since two thousand eight, whatever it's about, so there's fifteen years of bill over there, it's actually getting to where it is. So the water is getting out, but it's pushing the sludge and it's it's getting there, saving a number, um they would have a laundry to come in and just clean it out. We figured everything came through the facility, so we would have to haul it out, the only way we could haul it out would be for everything to landfill, they took that out.
Right.
And all that stuff, so we figured everything came through the facility. Um but I think it needs to be done for one part, like the stressful part is that it did my line. I'm pretty sure that I'm very confident, get that close, but I need to get some of that sludge. This is the main, it's on. Yeah, it's something that um need, if you had a better movement near the moon with water, so we're so protected by the trees, there is no.
Okay, so we had a little bit of technical difficulty and we ran out of internet, for some reason it went down at city hall, so we're on a hotspot right now. So um where we're at now is we're in the sewage um sewage irrigation pond and you you missed a little bit of discussion, but it was all, you know, technical. Why we needed to do it, and so now we're waiting on a motion um from Travis about whether or not to move forward with that request.
Yep, like Ryan said, this is maintenance on the uh lagoon, so and it hasn't been done for fifteen years, so. Uh I'll make a motion uh to approve the expense to muck out the irrigation ponds uh at the expense of five thousand nine hundred forty dollars. I will second.
To me, Travis on the first, we have Ryan on the second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes, anything else, sir?
Hey, one thing to do is the new addition we worked on right now, uh uh Tom Ross and Milton had looked at in spray foam. Because I didn't see we had this last winter was part on this, it's when we were getting into the rafters. Uh there's a couple of different bids that he actually had, he just actually sent that to me, and one of them, the. Yes, to spray the two gable and seal up the corners of the perimeter and then go down on the peak, you seal that up. We would put a roast or a side vent, a gable vent to get air, but then that would pretty much eclipse. So that is, and that would be seven hundred and eighty more dollars to do that, that would just be scaling it and then we still do uh. Fire last installation, so of everything else, and then there was a look at maybe doing another. Two thousand dollars probably to do uh bone insulation on with there, right now where we have all this is like our name. Those places were two by six wall.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to be R fifty, so there's not enough insulation above this, there is actually no insulation. Above the shop.
Right.
So there was like two different prices that would set eighty one just to seal up the actual steel or for the water. Meaning water, so hopefully we don't have insurance there, and then a bone insulation um. Cellulose was would be like another uh. Oh, fire less installation is twenty one hundred dollars, but then that would get. This half of a city bolt into the lines. Final be very much insulation the rest of the way what we got, so that's one of the things that just be doing this new area. That they are working. So one thing we looked at is even to keep it within budget is we had three thousand dollars for storage cabinets and stuff like that, but maybe. Pull off on that and then just put that money around so we can stay, that was compared around three thousand dollars.
Thirty eight hundred.
So it was like thirty eight hundred dollars, so we'd stay on budget and we had this kind of by shelving or pennies, shelving that we had for stories. Um which would have been a power base involved, I would think even your. Dust up here, you had very different facts and everybody's been, you know, staring at the storage area, but there was still.
So if I understand what you're saying correctly is that because of the additional insulation, we can juggle things, we still come in under budget. But protect the building more.
Right, and that is, this is what happened this winter is we got the wind, we got snow going in.
Do we need more insulation over there, I mean, is it necessary?
It's something that we could probably do at a later date, like in the winter, we could probably do that if we have budgeting.
Right.
And do it ourselves.
Is it cold up there, Lisa? Is it, or hot or?
But it's hard to say one day.
It depends, yeah, I say it depends what Terry said, and I had to suck a towel underneath the desk because I'm being pros all winter, but.
And it's hard to say.
There's probably no insulation up there.
It's hard to say.
I don't think I did anything to see those.
If I understand correctly what you're asking for is the council's approval to remove the cabinetry and replace with insulation.
Right.
How how.
Just to keep it on budget unless you wanna do try to earmark your money, but I think that's just an easy way to keep everything on bidding. Budget.
Yeah.
And seal the building.
But it's well spent, more instructional.
So is the spray foam gonna be on the walls too? Or what's gonna be on the walls?
That would be uh, you had to bid and text me with that and it was gonna be. I think twelve twenty four.
The reason why I ask is when you go out there and you look, you can see daylight in the the bends of the wall. And so I was wondering if spray foam was a better fit, at least on the crack, so it seals the building, as if you just put insulation in there, we're gonna have. All sorts of little families of little guys.
Have to have mark, I see it give me, I think it's uh twelve twenty four thirty nine, and then I was figured in the bid, but then to uh spray it home.
You can go look if you want, you can see daylight in those walls, just so you're aware.
But for the concrete needs.
We wall, it would be two thousand dollars for that, and so I think would be that bigger is twelve twenty four thirty nine to do uh. The insulate the wall and do a little insulation or bone insulation above what he is working on, the new stuff. Um so then to do that, all the two thousand sixty five dollars and sixty cents, it would be an additional. Eight hundred dollars, part of that which we probably be pretty close to. You know, with overrooting happens, I could try to get to figure out exactly or something else here, but it's maybe. Close to beyond budget.
Wouldn't you guys agree that if if he doesn't go over budget, that Ryan should have the latitude to do whatever he thinks is best? Yeah.
Especially for the long term.
Yeah.
So Brian.
Just update as needed.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you're not over budget, what do you guys think? Do we need to vote on that?
The money's already been.
Yeah. Looking at the long-term solution, because we don't want this to be a quick fix, we want it to be a long-term. Okay, anything else? Oh, yeah, definitely, everybody should think of it. Um, okay. Miss Finance Officer.
Can we defer to the bidding resolution?
Sure.
I missed that.
We approved the form as is, and then we also said that um if there's any, and then we corrected my spelling for the minutes. Of my name. And then we said if there was any other forms that they needed to complete the transaction, that we would take care of that at the next meeting.
Okay, um so did you get into the um.
Permissions?
The, okay, what? Who did what, like we did.
Yep, we approved it every line.
Okay.
Every line.
That's what she needs.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so then we'll go down to, all right, um Brian had mentioned the doctor, he was thinking about. S D M L conference, that's in October, and I looked over the um. Uh agenda and I'm not quite sure if that would be a good bet, but I I asked the lady from the municipal league. And I haven't heard back from her, but it's not until October to see, there's a couple of items on there that were for new people.
Right.
And I wanted to know how in depth that was, otherwise there's the elected officials, and is that end of June? Or I think. Okay, and that is, you know, for, um, new official. So anyways, I just, I'm working, I mean, we'll see what would be better. The S T M L conference has a lot like airport meeting, um, street meeting, um, you know, things like that. Attorney meeting, so, but there was a couple of things for new people and elected officials. And I wanted to see if that was the same as the other or different.
Well, it is a little muddy last year, so none of us put any, because we were just keeping the ship afloat.
Yeah.
So I think that's good information for all of us to consider.
I think that one also have the option for one day or two days, so if there's one day, it's a good.
Okay. Oh, but this is at the end of July.
Yeah, elected official, and the other one's not till October. So there's plenty of time to to think about that.
When's the registration that we?
I do.
By July.
You have the flexibility to go, it's wise, it's just there's so much information, even just browse around the municipal league website and just read. There's so much good information out there.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I guess we should leave it to each of the councilmen to see if it's something that they want to.
Yeah, because I've never got to that municipal league conference, because it's all these other organizations that don't affect us. Right, and it's business meetings, you know, things like that.
I remember stuff from that semester.
But we have to see how, what their what those couple of things.
Which one of you guys is the municipal airport manager, because that's, you know?
That's something.
Topographical situation.
That would be great, that would be great, okay, so everybody take a look at the selected officials workshop. Let's, um, do some due diligence and see, but I mean, the fees only fifty dollars. And here's some of the board is in overnight, it's a Monday.
Honestly.
Yeah.
I think this would be very highly recommended for us in light of.
I think.
Okay, I think it's something we should all at least consider, because, um, you know, last year was a little crazy. So I think trying to get back to normalcy is a good idea, that's my recommendation, but it's up to you guys.
I think it was on a meeting night last, or meeting day.
Well, it'll just have to.
Right, that's something.
Last year, yeah.
You wanna go to?
So then, um, okay, I will be out in town and then, oh, wait, I'll be out of the country. In July, so, um, the meeting's on seven eleven, and I was wondering if we could move it to seven eighteen.
But if we do that, then we have to make a decision on this registration.
Well, really, it's fifty dollars or.
Think you really got her, yeah.
But it's also overnight.
Well, is there anything on the budget for whatever travel?
There is.
I think.
I think we've ever voted.
If you have to vote on it. Yeah, there's reimbursement for you.
Okay. Okay, well then, register yourselves if you wanna go.
Yeah.
Travel buddy, whatever you wanna do. Okay, so we need to move the meeting to the eighteenth, correct?
Well, I just think it'd be probably easier, but, you know.
Yeah.
With during the transition.
That's fine. Um, we don't have to vote on that, though, we just agree to do it, right?
Okay.
Okay, cool, well then we're just gonna move that meeting to the eighteenth, so that's just updated in the calendar, so it's all ready to go. Um, revenue and expense report?
Um, just that you have one in your package, so you can look at it if you're.
It was, it was beautiful, thank you.
And then. And, okay, Lacey, uh, Jane and I have been talking about a friend, we're trying to get more people to sign up for A C H, because that makes life so easy.
Yeah.
And maybe doing like a twenty dollar credit for a little while, you know.
And this is for water bills?
People that, yeah, meeting people, let's find out. This is sign up on your first bill, look at our twenty, twenty dollar, twenty five dollar.
What do you guys think?
I guess it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Since you're, you're still eliminating manpower to.
Yeah.
Physically do it, so you still money it out by.
Yeah.
So you had want to vote on that?
Uh, yeah, oh, I, if we need to, I guess again, yeah, um.
Well, since it's finances, it probably is better if you.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
First time registration A C H.
Yeah. Can I make a motion to implement a credit for, what do you, is twenty dollars kind of what you're thinking as far as?
Twenty twenty.
When your first bill, after that, I'd make a motion to approve a twenty dollar credit, uh, for first time A C H sign up east.
Perfect, so I got it first, anybody else from second? Nikki's gonna second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Boom, okay, twenty twenty two audit, we had a lovely letter from Jane Fish. And, um, he went through the information with this, so the reports will become available and we will post them online. And this is the the letter that he kind of get went through, um, the deficiencies are things that are to be expected, which is, you know, every small town gets dinged on not having enough people sign up on stuff, because it need like seven people to meet the the requirement, or you will require them to meet the checks and balances, so we always get dinged on that, we always will. And, um, and then other than that, there was a a couple of, um, just tweaks in the system that we need to do, but there wasn't anything that was, you know, shocking, and, um, another thing that we did talk about, which I think we should probably bring to the council, is that there was discussion of having, until we get back on our feet and have some normalcy, having an audit every year as opposed to every two years. Because this audit was for twenty and twenty one, and here we are in twenty twenty three, and we're kind of like, this audit really means nothing, and now everything's changed, plus we're moving to a cash flow system as opposed to accrual. So an annual audit's probably a really great idea for us for right now, and then in a couple of years from now, we can go to every two years again. But I do think it's a good idea to do my recommendation as we move to an annual audit. So that's probably something, it will be a little bit of a cost increase, um, so just so you're aware of that, but it's not, it's not arduous, it's like.
Like twenty, what's that, twelve percent?
Yeah, yeah, it's like a twelve percent more of what it was, because you said if you did two years, it would be like one seventy, one seventy five is what you get instead of paying two whole silver lake. You're paying a little bit more to do it every year, but I think it also keeps our ship straight in real time, which is, I think, what we need right now. So can I get an any?
I think what what I was in the past, every year of all, and then the year, and it's to be able to play or market, they found and what not. But full, um, well then, but that's kind of the facts. They're all severe every year.
Did they option that?
That was probably, no, that was probably the annual report they get, and then they come back and do the audit.
Yeah, because there'll still be here for the annual report.
Yeah.
So I think that's the little ones over checks and balances. And I'm not saying we need to do this indefinitely, I just think over the next couple of years, it's a really good idea, just because the, um, the books were unconventional. And so we are trying to clean things up and make sure that everything is compliant the way it needs to be, and the finances make sense. So that's my recommendation, do you guys support that, or would you like to continue doing two years?
I think there's much change that's going on, changing your entire accounting system is probably a viable to make sure we're doing it right.
Really wanna do an annual?
Yeah, we can, so we can. What is the actual expense per month?
It's, um, it was a couple thousand dollars, isn't it?
Well, that, oh, yeah, I shouldn't have that, really.
I think it's like that, that's at at most.
Daytime.
At most, okay, so it's gonna be like two thousand dollars more, because there, because if it's eight or nine thousand dollars, twenty five percent of that would be two thousand.
Oh, can I go and look and then?
Yeah.
Great, it's a poor pile.
Inside joke.
Brian, he's a file expert.
How about we'll look into this, we'll make the decision next month, because we don't need to make it this second, but it's something that I'd really like you guys to consider. And Linda will get us the numbers on that, so any other commentary on the audit?
This, yeah, he was, you know, there was small, there was, there was issues.
Yeah.
But it was nothing that would hurt Shavon or.
Yeah, and we're in the process of.
And that, but the, uh, revenue had increased, so that was a good sign.
Yeah. Also, they have to do a checks and balances, and so because of how they're getting audited, there's gonna be another firm that comes in and audits them, which they wanted them to just up their rates at thirty percent just straight up this year, and they said they're not gonna do that, but it will gradually over time get up to a thirty percent increase, because they're getting, their audits are getting audited.
And, yeah, and they're, they'll be requiring more paperwork.
Which is our favorite thing on the planet.
Yeah, so they'll have to even dig deeper.
And thank God it's gonna be clean and a straight line, and it's gonna be fun, and we love audits, so, okay, so that's audit, what else do we got?
It's all.
Perfect.
Community relations report. All right. I am working on dog days right now, I've got, uh, twelve of the twenty events confirmed, uh, with volunteers on the dog days events, and then we have about seven more that we're waiting on, uh, we're gonna have a meeting on Monday at six o'clock here for, and I've been inviting as many people as I can, um, anyone and everyone is welcome if they want to volunteer. Uh, and we've been specifically reaching out to million people in town so that they can meet new people and be a part of the community, and Lacey's been really excited, so. Um, that's where we're at there.
What time is the meeting?
Six, six o'clock on Monday, here, in this room.
And just for points of clarification, the reason why Dog Days is being brought into City Hall is because there wasn't really a committee left after last year. And so for the purposes of consi- consistency and the purpose of having ongoing, you know, uh, continuity in this event, the remaining committee gave permission for City Hall to take on this event. They took their notes and with their blessing, we're moving forward, and they gave us the contact information of everybody that's done events in the past, so we can have it as smooth as possible, so you'll see some things are the same, some things are a little different, but I have to tell you, Lacey Harrington has been knocking it out of the park. Because we just got this information on May eleventh from the previous committee, and so she has turned this around very quickly, and I'm confident it will be a fantastic event. So just kudos to her for digging in and just making it happen, okay, what else you got?
All right, so then, uh, regarding communications, we're just trying to be, um, we're trying to communicate as much as possible with the citizens, and, uh, one of the ways we wanna do that is a welcome egg that we're gonna start doing for the new citizen, and having a welcome committee maybe. And then having like the alderman maybe take turns doing like a thirty day, sixty day, ninety day, and one year visit to them just to see how, how things are going here. Um, and so and we've met some of the newer people that have been moving in the last month, and they're just been, they seem like they're excited, so, uh, and then the other way we're doing that is by a newsletter, we're gonna start sending out a newsletter, so I'm trying to get as many email addresses as possible. But if people do want it sent by mail, we will do that. Uh, and then there, we're gonna have some topics like, like some, did you know, um, get to know your alderman, so I'll be bugging you about that. And then maybe like a business spotlight, uh, so we can help support the businesses here. So there's, there's more, but, uh, that's just a couple of things we're just trying to communicate as much as possible with everyone that looks through.
And we wanna mimic the school system, which is very good, having the text and the email, so that way you send a text saying, hey, check your email, because there's information from the city, so we can get information to constituents, maybe not necessarily in three hour council meetings, right? Because, you know, everybody wants to Netflix that, right, for three hours? And so we're trying to figure out how to break the information into more bite sized pieces, and more importantly, not necessarily have everything on Facebook, because it shouldn't be a requirement to be on Facebook to be a citizen holding. So we're trying to find alternative, we have the shopper in print, now we're gonna have the email, we have the videotapes of the meetings, and then we also have Facebook for social media, so we have all these different forms of communication. As you can see tonight, we're gonna have a lot more outreach with aldermen with their constituencies, so we'll have in person communication as well too. So just lots of things coming, it's gonna be good. And I get to hand it all off to Lacey Harrington, fantastic.
Facebook posts of them.
Got it, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay, John Hughes, anything fun?
Sure, we've got two significant court events that will take place this month, the first on Thursday, June fifteen to nine o'clock, Judge Sandra Hansen will hear arguments in the meeting. Frank the clerk to reject milk near Isaac filed last month. And the. As the council knows, Sarah Frankenstein and Earl Law Firm will retain to represent the city. Lisa Marcel was retained by Deborah to represent her. And Drew Dunton is a lawyer for her. And he has been retained by the, the tax, self code, the transfer to government. Issue before the court is to decide whether the grounds stated in the recall petition, petitions that were circulated assessed by the specificity requirements of the statutes. And, uh, I believe this is a case of first impression. Not where any other suit that has been filed challenging a recall petition based on the specificity requirements that have been statute. So thirty minutes have been set aside for the argument, anyone who's walking to attend. Uh, this would be, would be many upcoming court events. And in Judge Sandra Hansen's court. So.
It will be four D.
Before, okay, four D, it's where that will take place. Um, you know, the complaint and motion, the in briefs and those in briefs have all been filed, were then served. So I wonder, I just received the last set of those today from Sarah Frankenstein's office. I could, I could send them to all the council members. Posted on the website. We're gonna know on Thursday, the judge may or may not move from the bench, it's hard to predict how judges will handle that type of video here. She may decide from the bench, where she may take another advisement and issue a written decision. So we'll just have to see how that goes.
So what you're asking the council is, do they want to post the briefs from the recall city website?
It's all public record, I think.
It is. I have no, I have no problem with it. Yeah. So how should, should I email those to you, Lacey, or then tomorrow, okay, good morning, Paul, you know, those two. And see, see what happens. Um, Thursday, the second court event that was taking place is June twenty sixth, which is a Monday at nine AM, Judge Barnett will hear oral arguments on the city's motion that attorney's fees are being assessed against Frank Harbor Capital and Luismann Law Firm and Alex Mastalar of the Ricky Noonan Law Firm. Based upon, there are at least three separate legal grounds for a municipality that is prevailing target, a case that is dismissed on a motion and smooth basis, and in this case, as I believe all you know, Judge Barnett ruled in March that either of the lawsuits filed in November against the city mayor, city council, and the planning is only mission. That the legal standard required you number one, state a legal claim on which will be granted, so basically the judge ruled that the lawsuits failed to state a claim that will be sustainable, take through their evidence and testimony. And, and actually, I I reversed the order, the judge also dismissed the cases because Frank Harbor Capital, Fisher and the one case, and the plaintiff in the other case failed to go through the administrative process that is required in yourself, through the statutes and municipal orders. When a person has a dispute with the city or a complaining zoning issues. Statues clearly report that either. Disagreeable or agreed decision is being challenged or is sought to be challenged. Must be up to the broad within twenty one days, the board adjustment, the board adjustment needs to have basically an evidentiary. So none of those steps were taken. So we, we worked for several months. Briefing. Two court hearings, so. Again, hard to predict what Judge Barnett would move. He could move from the bench. He could take the matter under advisement, and when he makes the decision, he can either. Deny the motions for attorney's fees. I think the total amount claimed as of the date of filing is about eighty three thousand dollars. It's probably like several thousand dollars because. So, or it, it's a matter of judicial discretion. So he'll either grant it entirely or impart. Or deny it entirely or impart, and so we'll find out what the judge's. Inflation is likely, probably find out which way he's leaning, piece, any sixth. Those managers are the, the judge Barnett is totally, I believe that's why they. I can, somebody is interested in knowing more, I can confirm that. That's Monday, June twenty sixth at nine.
Is that another topic of first impression or not so much?
It's really, it's, it's first, I, I guess I would say so, there, there are. There's very, there's clear authority that a developer or a complaining party that wants to build something. Or develop something needs to fully exhaust all of the procedures and. Boards that are available at the municipal level in this case. It's the same for the county level. The Grant Park did not appeal to dismissable leader case. So legally. A ruling stand as they were entered, because they're not being challenged on the deal. We still have the third case. Which Grant Park significantly wanted to dismiss. We are willing to specific, but with the reservation that the city can claim attorney's fees loss. In connection with that third dismissal of that case that was filed in federal. And that was an appeal under the Rips or Sharari, board adjustment decision, January. Which decided that the joint motion. Brandon to get to this board, it was um, passed by the PNC and the council on the table twenty six, just moved. You know, the rest of Grant Park people that's, see what happens, it's a lot going on.
Thank you, John. Um, anything else?
I have one thing for legal on the panel. Um, we have a camper and campground that has failed to pay the revolts. We still, we're not notices trying to get them to make it to spot. I called the sheriff's office yesterday. They started playing the game as well as private property, we only police think now public property, like. As soon as the city of all tape, which is public property. So I go, they were, finally the deputy did find the law, I mean, for Q game, he said, this, we don't get into civil matters or anything like that. Be that I'm like, I don't care about these, I want to bake, I want it out of the park. Um, I went, was taking pictures of it, there was no license, no VIN number on it, so there was. Same in the deputy, finding the information, he's all around, go local. Are a shot to see if there was another spot other than interior, there's no grounds to see was there. I, there is one there now, I can even count. Um, I found a most morning saying this is not vacated by tomorrow. Thursday morning, we were. But I don't follow legality wise, yeah, I.
Is that a motor vehicle?
The camper.
Just a camper. Abandoned, isn't it?
I know, and there's no license or registration. I'd say it's abandoned, yes.
I'd call a tow company.
That's what I've been saying, I, that one, I call the deputies.
Well, I haven't looked at the, I haven't looked at the removal. They actually still on time. Case went to trial years ago. And uh. If it's a motor vehicle, I, I would need to check the definition of the statute. See if it qualifies as, as a vehicle that is subject to removal. When it is abandoned or otherwise unlawfully on premises. There, there is a statute that gives immunity to a removal agency, which would be a toll company. So let me take a look at that. Back on the other question, let us, so let me take that. But I still want to share some. And you look, take it, take it as.
That, that's all I really wanted them to do, to, you know, every twenty four hours, six, but they really did.
Stress pass. And okay, I'll look at it.
Perfect. Anything else?
No, that was, that was my question.
Well, believe it or not, it is eight forty one and we have reached the end of our agenda, just. Is there any councilor updates that want to make us go past eight forty one?
Well, yeah, I mean. I, I'm, I'm curious. That's um, with this whole recall then. That uh, the petitioning party lied about how many signatures they have. Because they kept saying they had over hundred sixty some signatures. But it turns out they only had hundred and thirty six, which two. Are under scrutiny because the people, the two of the signers moved the Garrett so.
They're still legal.
Yet they're still legally able to vote if they're on the voter.
Correct.
But please don't interrupt, I'm in danger. And, you know, that's extremely unethical for this couple that moved out town. To vote in an alderman election. And then sign a petition that they have no legality or any reason to sign. So, and besides my one rant about them lying about the entire meeting. I kind of find it odd that. This whole town of twelve hundred people have to bow down to one hundred and thirty four people. I know it's hundred thirty six, but I refuse to acknowledge those two. Um, because there's over two hundred and some people that voted for Mayor McIsaac. And yet we have to go through these soups. She has to go through all the soups for a hundred and thirty four people. How is that right for the entire town to deal with?
That very point's going to be argued.
Perfect.
Yeah, if anyone, if you come to the.
It's, it's. It's the only thing I, I wanted to say because it's ridiculous.
I just, I, I don't disagree with that.
Someone has to pay to stay in office.
It's uh, the expense of the city.
Well, the expense to death.
Yeah, it's uh, you know, the, the, the council let have attorney's fees for Sarah Frankenstein. And I think for maybe a little bit, number one, she was uh, Sarah Frankenstein is. One of two. Lawyers in South Florida that are certified by the Public Insurance Pool Deal. To handle election matters for municipalities. She's not free, the city will pay for her. Or, and the mayor is paying, I'm sure, several thousand dollars. Depending on how far the schools.
Where, not everyone's ever been get along. You can't get along. It's like you're, you're a small town, you're in a big family, not everyone's going to get along. But you know what? Don't take this stuff personal. This has never been personal. It was personal before she was elected. It was personal before I was elected. It was never that going on the side. And not just the previous administration, the administrations before that. Were, were not held accountable for their actions, and yet we all got along, we moved along. I don't see any legality behind his actions, so. It's ridiculous that we have to go through these soups. I'm done, sorry. So boxing down.
The point being that the legal counsel that was obtained was retained. Specifically to provide a completely unbiased object. Representation that is free of any possible. Accusation of some kind of. Whatever is biased or credence, which is. Important, it's important for the process to, you know, once it was initiated, important to. Set a procedure in place that is beyond, beyond our, Judge Harrington's a fine judge. Pretty fine mind, so don't make a reason to settle.
Any other councilor mayor updates? Well, Nancy and Karen, do we, the motion to adjourn?
I'll second eight forty six.
As the first wins second at eight forty six, I'll lose in favor of C I. Any opposed? Dean and Karen.